Good evening. The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, December 10th, 2019. It is 6:00 PM. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Dear loving heavenly Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who have gathered your day. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the life-
For our life and for the measures of health we need to fulfill our callings. The substance and friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you and for the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you could graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved City of Riverbank. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak and listen particularly and respectfully when it is time to listen. May they and we also be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let us take a moment of silence for those in New Jersey that was involved this morning and for those servicemen and women at the Air Force Base in Pensacola, Florida, and for those families in the naval base, naval shipyard in Hawaii. Thank you heavenly Father. May peace and enjoyment be with each family this Christmas. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member District One, Louise Uribe.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Two, Cindy Fosse.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Three, Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair, Marlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair, Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
There will be no changes to the agenda. Conflicts of interest. Any council authority member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. I have a conflict of interest in item 6.1 and will recuse myself on that. All right. Now, this is a good and sad time. I get to do recognition. Robert Ball, please. Mr. Ball.
Come on up. You get to be in here. Thank you very much. My pleasure.
Robert's been with the Planning Commission for two years, has done a stellar job. We went through some contentious times as well as some significant growth, and his work and the work of the rest of the Planning Commission is truly appreciated. And so, with that, this is presented to Robert Ball, Planning Commissioner, in appreciation and recognition for your dedication and outstanding service to the City of Riverbank. And it gives the ear. And sir, I want to again thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, the floor is yours. You have to give a speech, not less than five minutes.
Good luck. No, just appreciate the opportunity to serve the community and the council. Thank you very much. And you're moving? Move to a whole two and a half miles away, but it's on the other side.
Oh, traitor.
Oh, I know. I weighed heavily on my heart, trust me.
Okay. Again, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
He didn't speak in. I don't see him.
All right. So, there is a change to the agenda. We will not have item 1.2 at this time. If he comes in, we will. If not, I'll go to the Planning Commission and give him the appointment. Public comments, item two. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Are there any public comments tonight? Anyone from Enoch's High wants to come on up and speak? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move forward to the consent calendar, consistent of item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of November 12th, 2019, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority amendments. Item 3C, a resolution to rescind Resolution 2005-043 and to authorize the city manager to approve budget amendments up to $25,000. Is there anyone wishing to pull any of the items? Do we have any recommendations?
I make a motion we approve the consent calendar as read.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on the consent calendar.
Council Authority Members Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse. Yes. Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 4.1, second reading by title only and adoption of the proposed ordinance number 2019-008, amending title 13 land usage, Chapter 134 prohibit against underage drinking and social host liability by repealing this chapter as an entirety and substituting it with a new Chapter 134 prohibition against underage drinking and cannabis use and social host liability to the Riverbank Municipal Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. This item, as stated by the mayor, is a second reading. The item is substantially to form with the first reading. There are no substantive changes, and it addresses the issues that we discussed last meeting. So, I'm happy to go through it, otherwise be happy to answer questions.
Is there one wishing him to go through it? This is public forum. Anyone from the public wish to speak on item 4.1? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for consideration.
I make a motion we accept the item as stated.
I second.
I second.
We have a motion to approve, item 4.1, and a second.
Council Members Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
Yes.
Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.1, a resolution accepting the fiscal year 2018-19 annual AB 1600 report of system development fee activities.
Thank you, Mayor. Assistant City Manager, Maricela Garcia, will give you this report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, we have the annual report of AB 1600 fees that are collected by the City of Riverbank. These are our system development fees that are assessed on all new development, that's both residential and commercial. The report is required by state law to be presented to the City Council by December 31st of every fiscal year. So, within your agenda packet is the report that has been prepared, that was published approximately 15 days ago, so that it would be available for public review and for any comments made by them. Not a lot of notable activity on the report, other than the fact that we did appropriate funds towards three major projects, the first being the spatial analysis that is currently underway for all of City Hall buildings. The second was the purchase of a vehicle for or setting aside funds for the purchase of a future animal control vehicle. And then, we've also set aside funds for the Parks Master Plan. So, those are three of the major projects. The animal control set aside is a three-year set aside that we will be doing, and at the end of the three years, we will be purchasing a new vehicle. So, I'm available for any questions.
Is there any questions, Maricela? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. I open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wish to speak on item 3.1, 5.1? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for consideration. Wait a minute. I closed the public hearing. That's what I did. And then, I brought it back.
I make a motion that we approve item 5.1.
I second.
We have a motion to approve and a second for item 5.1.
Council Members Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
Yes.
Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.2, conduct the public hearing and table consideration of the closeout of 16 CDBG 11211 grant under State of California Housing and Community Development, Economic Development, over the counter OTC allocation in support of a commercial business to finance public infrastructure to meet the needs of Repsco, Inc.
Thank you, Mayor. As council is aware, this grant was a grant that the city received a couple of years ago to upgrade electrical infrastructure at the Riverbank Industrial Complex, as well as do some tenant improvements around the Repsco business. Those improvements have all been met. The funds have been spent. There are some reporting requirements related to public benefit that were not satisfied at time of publication, and so, we're requesting that council continue, requesting continued, the continuance of this item, or table the item, excuse me, to a date to be determined. We want to make sure that our paperwork is correct before you approve the closeout, because the state is very picky about making sure that each thing is done in order. So, we need, we will probably be able to bring it back at the first meeting in January, is what Melissa from the LRA shared with me today.
Is there any consequence for being out of order?
We still have time. We won't be late.
Okay. We don't want to pay the 500, 800 back?
No.
Okay. All right. Any questions before I open the public hearing? No questions or comments from the public, I mean, from the council? I open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to provide comments on this item? I have no comments. I will close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion we table item 5.2.
I'll second.
By roll call vote?
Council Authority Members Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
Yes.
Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Both applicants have now left the chambers, so we will proceed. For the record, Mayor O'Brien has recused himself from consideration of item 6.1 and has exited the room due to his participation as an applicant of these proceedings. I am Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez, and I shall preside over this next business item. New business, item 6.1. Conduct public interviews and select an applicant to serve as the Riverbank representative on the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District Board of Directors and adopt a resolution to approve the appointment of the applicant selected to the Stanislaus County Consolidated Fire Protection District Board of Directors as the City of Riverbank representative. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As city clerk for the City of Riverbank, Annabelle Aguilar is responsible for many of our appointed and commission and commission appointments, this being included. So, she was lead on, as usual, on making sure the recruitment is out and has coordinated this effort. So, she's going to give the report this evening.
Good evening, members of the City Council. So, tonight is your appointment for the Riverbank representative to the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District Board of Directors. So, as you know, every four years, the City Council has an opportunity to appoint a Riverbank resident to the District Board of Directors. The term for current representative, Michelle Guzman, ends at the end of the year. Notice of a vacancy was posted, and I posted the notice, for mid-October to December 3rd, and applications were received by Mr. Chad Homie and Riverbank Mayor, Richard O'Brien. So, we have to consider appointing, the appointment of a mayor who is currently holding public office of the city. So, it's important, for the record, that I mention the doctrine of incompatible offices, which prohibits a person from concurrently holding two public offices. The performance of the duties of either office could have a significant adverse effect on the other. So, the consideration, can the mayor simultaneously hold the office of the Board of Director for the fire district as he holds the office for mayor? And there was opinion issued by the State Attorney General in April of 26, 2019, which resulted in the mayor of Riverbank may simultaneously hold both offices if the city, which is the City Council, designates the mayor as the appointee to the board. So, the position as Riverbank representative is a four-year term, beginning January 2020 through December 2023. Basically, the responsibilities are charged with strategic leadership, policy and direction, and fiscal oversight of the district. Riverbank representative selected will be expected to report to the City Council at least on a quarterly basis to provide updates on the board's business and actions. So, the recommendation is to conduct the public interviews, and by a majority roll call vote, declare their appointee, and ratify the appointment by adoption of a resolution. Or, and I wanted to give you this third option, you may request that I conduct another recruitment after the holidays to solicit more applications. So, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, I will, we will now proceed with the interviews, and I will draw a number to determine which applicant will be interviewed first. I have two applicants. There's a bunch of numbers in here. So, applicant number two.
Thank you for letting me speak before you. I am Richard O'Brien. I think some of you know me. And I'd like to be the city's representative on the Consolidated Fire Board for several reasons. One, I think right now, they are mismanaging their money in such a way-
Mayor, I, excuse me for interrupting you. The vice mayor does have some direction, just to tell the audience how this is going to occur.
Go ahead. Tell me what to do.
Thank you. Okay. So, you have up to three minutes to present your qualifications, education, and interest to serve as a Riverbank representative on the Fire District Board of Directors. Please proceed. Thank you.
Education?
Qualifications, education, and interest.
Okay. Education. I have a master's in business administration. I graduated from the executive, what is it, Leadership School for the U.S. Navy. I'm certified HR. And for my interest, I've been interested in this district since 2010, when I first started my public life. And qualifications, I can take complex problems, write them down, and have them easily understood by others that are out there. And I can, I am a problem solver. I have been a problem solver for, oh, at least 50 of my 68 years. Is that good enough?
Thank you.
Now what?
Why you feel that you're qualified to be on the board?
Well, first off, I can do the, manage a budget, which is something that's lacking right now. Secondly, I have a significant firefighting background in the U.S. Navy as the engineer officer and damage control officer on an aircraft carrier, cruiser, and a frigate. Did a lot of training for the U.S. Navy in those areas, and although it is completely different, confined spaces are confined spaces, whether they're with a fire or with gases. So, I think I'm qualified or have experience in that. Management-wise, I think I am a pretty good manager. I think we do pretty well in the city with your help, and I think with the board's help, or the district board's help, we could save this consolidated path that's going on right now. It does not seem like it's going to be solved in the very near future, if not at all. Want me to continue on? Now, can I speak?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah. I think the fire district right now has have major economic issues. They're in the hole right now. Crossroads, when it was first built out from 1999 till now, there was approximately 2,000, 2,100,000 that was collected in development fees. In 2004, there was a special tax to the City of Riverbank specifically for a fire house that was stopped being collected after the assessment went into effect in 2005. That money, according to Chief Maad, is still set aside, but they can't find it. He, Chief Maad, in 2012, came before this council, stated that there was 2.1 million dollars available for the house. However, there was no way that they could staff a firehouse at two persons at that time, would have cost about a million dollars. Three persons would be approximately 1.2 million dollars. million in today's standard, with the increases in pay and benefits. It would be above $1.4 million. What does that mean? To staff it, they would need additional 3,660 homes, if it's paying $300 a year in assessments. That's just to operate the house. We don't have a plan for that. We need to make sure that we get the assistance of the pedestrian city, like Chief Mayotte said, that we'll be able to take care of any issues in the new development. Until such time, the firehouse can be built and the manning, the staffing levels satisfied. Right now, with the closure or the contract for Oakdale being terminated, the, we have seen an increase in overtime, which is causing stress within the firefighters. And we also saw a closure of a firehouse because of lack of funds. The closure of the firehouse is now bringing four individuals to the rigs, vice three, and all that's doing is adding cost. So what's the solution? I would say that we have to take a look at the staffing levels, and staff appropriately, terminate if necessary. The other thing, too, is unfunded liabilities are not being addressed adequately. They're going to have millions of dollars of unfunded liabilities, which they have no plan on paying. They're asking other people to pay it for them. That's not going to happen.
I have 30 seconds. Thank you.
Okay. I think that I'm the person that can help them balance their books, make a plan for the future, and get the stalemate between the City of Riverbank and Consolidated, get that roadblock cleared.
Thank you. Each council member will now ask two questions, and please let us know if you'd like us to repeat the question. We will begin with Councilmember Uribe.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I have two questions for you. First one is, what do you understand is the role of the Riverbank representative, and how involved and dedicated would you be to this position?
The role of the Riverbank representative is to represent the interest of the City of Riverbank to the board, while keeping in mind the mission and the direction that the Consolidated has to go. Balance the two bodies, and to move forward. Also, to ensure that the Consolidated can provide adequate fire protection to Riverbank under the contract that it is, that it agreed to. That is, provide fire suppression systems, fire suppression units. There's additives that have been placed in Consolidated that I believe they stepped over their bounds, such as the amount of paramedics that they have.
Okay. Question number two. It is, and you've touched on this already, it is public knowledge that the fire district is having financial difficulties. As the Riverbank representative, what top three steps would you take to ensure the district obtains, sustains, financial stability?
There are three steps, three areas that we have to look at. Whether we're cutting personnel, cutting expenses to bring it in line, that's one. I don't believe that there's a lot of willingness to do the cuttings of personnel. Or, two, look at forming a JPA, and that will look at other fire districts for either joint powers authority, or for consolidation, such as pedestrians and series. Chief Mayotte was looking into that in 2012. I believe that fell through. Or the third one is if they can't take care of certain areas, detach.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Fossey.
Hi.
My first question is, the district board of directors considers and acts on items of business such as personnel, budgeting, and policymaking. How have you prepared to familiarize yourself with the activities and actions the board has taken to date?
I'm familiar with their budgeting. I'm familiar with some of their activities, not all of them. But I do know the budget pretty well, and that I don't agree with a lot of the decisions made in the last several years, especially the amount of pay raises that were received, causing a deficit right after the pay raises were granted.
Thank you. My second question is, what do you see as the top three concerns facing the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District?
Unfunded liabilities, budget shortfalls. I do have a third one, but I'm going to reserve that one. Sorry.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Good evening again, Mayor. The district's financial transparency has been lacking. What top three steps would you take to improve transparency of the district's financial operations, information, and status?
I don't believe it's not transparent. I think it's confused. I would, they have the books open when you do the budget process. I would expect that that to be clearer in the definition, the same way that we do it for the city. And all your, for your funding that you get from development, that has to be set aside separately, and it should be accounted for separately. Your assessments that you get, they're $268 a year now. By the time these build-outs are going to be close to $300 a year. That has to be taken into account for the pays, and the operation of their fire suppression systems. And they also get property taxes. That has to be clearly identified, accounted for, and where it's spent. And that's easy to do. They just have to have it done.
Thank you. Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about, and describe how you, as a board member, would balance the concerns or needs to the city council, community, district staff, and other board members to determine how to vote on the issue.
Well, the board decided not to accept the firefighter's recommendation, and I believe they were giving back close to $900,000 to keep Oakdale and Oakdale Rural. The board did not accept that. I believe the board was playing roulette, and they lost. So that decision, to me, was not a palatable one, in my opinion, which has caused a lot of more, a lot more problems since they pulled out of Consolidated. Other board decisions, they had two big pay raises of 6% retroactive, 6%, almost 6%, then followed by 3%, which, to me, if you can't pay your staff, you're just putting the city and their district at, in jeopardy of being able to do their mission.
Thank you.
Okay, and I just have one question. What is your experience working in a group setting, and how will you make sure that all members are engaged in collaborating and respecting each other's input, views, and recommendations?
Well, one of the things that you have to do is that you have to be all on the same page. I think strategic planning is a first step in building a team, and then going from there, setting your priorities. And with that, everyone agrees on the priorities, and you go for it. I believe it works very well for the City of Riverbank, and I believe it could work well for the Consolidated Fire Protection District.
Thank you. Okay. So your interview is now completed, and we thank you for interviewing, and you may now please return to the lobby.
Okay, is, the staff, can I ask, do you have any questions? I know the legal has some concerns.
Mayor, can you clarify that?
Well, I know that legals have some concerns with one legal team versus another legal team.
Right. So in that context, as Annabelle did present to the council at the beginning of the presentation, this issue of a perceived conflict of interest, based on the doctrine of incompatible offices, has been an ongoing discussion. And based off of that, the city, in conjunction with the assembly, a local assembly member requested, specifically requested that the Attorney General's office look into the issue. And Annabelle did present you with a synopsis of what the decision was, that the doctrine of incompatible offices would normally apply when you have someone who holds an elected position, and then potentially serves in a conflicting position, like in this case, it would be on the board. But based off of the language of the statute that applies for the fire protection board itself, there is a very limited exception that applies here. And based off of that, the AG's office made it clear that this appointment would therefore not result in an incompatible office situation. And based off of that is why the city, city staff and the mayor decided to move forward with this application.
And I did apply because there was no other applications. We extended the application period, an additional length of time when we got a second one, which I'm pleased that they, you have a choice instead of just giving it to me. The other thing is, the question I have, and it's going to be a struggle, is their legal team, I do not concur with on a lot of the issues. And I concur with our legal team a lot more than Consolidated. That would be a conflict. Who do I accept when I'm wearing different hats? So that's the only thing that I believe you should consider when deliberating. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're ready for the next applicant, please. Thank you. Hi. Would you state your name and your city of residence for the record, please?
Chad Homie, and Riverbank is my city of residence.
Okay, thank you. You will have up to three minutes to present your qualifications, education, and interest to serve as Riverbank's representative on the Fire District Board of Directors. Please proceed. Thank you.
Good evening. Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez, Councilmember Campbell, Fossey, Uribe, City Manager Scully, City Attorney Goldstein, and City Clerk Aguilar. My name is Chad Homie, and I am here seeking the position to represent the City of Riverbank on the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District Board of Directors. I have been a resident of Riverbank since 2006. My wife and I moved here. We got married in 2007. We have a daughter that was born in 2018, and we're happy to carve Riverbank our home. In my personal life, we are involved with some volunteer organizations. We are largely involved with the March of Dimes, March for Babies, another organization called the Compassionate Friends, as well as various animal rescue organizations in the community. I've served public agencies since 1996 at the age of 20, so I have 23 years serving public agencies. I work currently for the Stanislaus County Office of Emergency Services Fire Warden's Office as the county communications coordinator. I serve all the fire agencies within the county for their communications needs. That position I've held also since 2007. Typical day for me includes supporting fire agencies within the county, whether it be communication systems, towers, mobiles, portables, networking, fire computers, CAD dispatch systems, and situations like that. Several of the committees that I take place of that explain some of the groups that I maintain. There's a Stanislaus County Communications Advisory Committee, which all of the fire agencies attend, which is an advisory committee to the Stanislaus County Fire Chiefs Association. I am a representative on NAPCO, which is the National Association of Public Communications Officials. And I also serve on the California Statewide Interoperability Executive Committee, as well as the Capital Bay Area Planning Committee. I'm also a nationally certified communications unit leader and technician, actually the only one in Stanislaus County. So some of those qualifications give me experience working with large groups, working with agencies, having to deal with numerous agencies. And, you know, every agency needs to have their needs met, but we have to make the decisions that are to serve all the agencies as a whole as the best as we can. I currently, well, I should say, I previously did apply for this position in 2012. Mayor O'Brien was actually the mayor at that time, and Ms. Guzman was chosen at that time, and she has represented the City of Riverbank excellently. And I think she served as a great ambassador for the City of Riverbank. Ever since moving to Stanislaus County, I have followed Stanislaus Consolidated Fire District pretty closely. I set up news alerts. I am very aware of, you know, having to close stations, some of the fire struggles that they've had with the financial component, and the upcoming pension cost rises. So I am aware of the challenges that Stanislaus Consolidated is facing. My prime, my top priority would be, obviously, the service to the city of, the residents of City of Riverbank, and maintaining the service to the City of Riverbank. Secondly, would be the financial component, and doing everything we can to maintain, maintain a good budget. You know, the department has had many good years, just like, just like the housing economy around here. It's been booming at times, other times it's not booming. It ebbs and flows, and I'm confident that Stanislaus Consolidated would be the department that would be able to pull it off. And I would, I would commit to the city that I would work in that position and do the best of my ability to support the City of Riverbank. With the upcoming growth in Crossroads West, numbers are kind of fluctuating, but it looks like around 1,800 homes, and then around, depending on the articles you look at, 300 to 500 apartments, condominiums, things of that sort. I believe that it's imperative that we maintain levels of service, and that we're able to support Crossroads West, as well as the existing Riverbank community, because that is a substantial number of homes. When you figure, if you figure 1,800 homes, and the average home probably has in the neighborhood of three to four residents in it, that's a substantial growth, a substantial demand, when you look at how often people are calling for help. I would like to thank the city for extending an invitation to me for coming to be interviewed for this position, and I would like to open it to any, any of your questions.
Thank you. Each council member will now ask two questions, and please let us know if you would like us to repeat the question for clarification. And we will begin with Councilmember Uribe.
Thank you. First question, what do you understand is the role of the Riverbank representative, and how involved and dedicated would you be to this position?
The role of the Riverbank position is to represent the City of Riverbank on the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Board of Directors. Stanislaus Consolidated serves various areas of the county, different areas of the county, have different representatives, different seats. Some of them are appointed by board supervisors, some are city. It varies. In Riverbank, it's the city council, which is why I'm here. And the role there is to support the City of Riverbank. I like to think of it with a special district as the City of Riverbank is contracting with Stanislaus Consolidated for fire protection. I would like to think of it as a partnership.
And then that second part was how involved and dedicated would you be to this position?
I understand the commitment of the, of the monthly board meetings. I also understand the need to be available to the, to the city, and to regularly report back to the city. I think communications is the key to any good working relationship. And I, and I realize there will be times that there will be many more meetings than the, than the regularly scheduled board meetings. You know, for instance, they, there can be side meetings discussing just different things, station closure, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Second question, it is public knowledge that the fire district is having financial difficulties. As the Riverbank representative, as the Riverbank representative, what top three steps would you take to ensure the district obtains, sustains, financial stability?
I think it would be important to work with the district and do everything we can to maintain financial stability. to maintain financial stability. A couple of those things are Crossroads West, Crossroads West growth. We need to ensure that the, this is my opinion, but we need to ensure that Crossroads West pays the way for the fire service to grow in the Crossroads West subdivision. It is common practice throughout the United States that when growth takes place, the growth pays to build the station, and then your property taxes, your assessment pays for the staffing and the manpower. So I think that is a, that is one of the big financial components that would be something that we, we need to keep on the radar. I also think we need to have very good open communications with Stanislaus Consolidated Fire, and I think we would need to, you know, there might be some times that there needs to be some tough decision made, but we, we obviously need to protect the city of Riverbank and its residents as a top priority, and then we need to make, we need to make decisions and try and balance the budget. Now, I also understand with the Oakdells pulling out of Stanislaus Consolidated, that did take some of the vacancies, and so basically they have, they have been placed into a situation where they're having to pay overtime to hire back guys to fill positions, which is, long term, that, that's not sustainable, but they are, they actually have firefighters in the academy right now, and that there is a plan to, to work on that. I, I think the end goal needs to get the department back where they're operating in the black, and I think that they need to get back to a situation where there's a healthy reserve.
You mentioned tough decisions. What did you mean by that?
You know, tough decisions, I would say, my example for tough decisions would be like managing your own bank account. Sometimes you, you have to make decisions based on what you're able to work with. You can't go out and spend more money than you make. And it's unfortunate, but that's, that's the way it is.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Fosse?
Thank you. My first question is, the District Board of Directors considers and acts on items of business such as personnel, budgeting, and policymaking. How have you prepared to familiarize yourself with the activities and actions the board has taken to date?
I think I would need to spend a lot of time communicating with the other board members and coming up to speed on their personnel reviewing financials. There are also courses that are actually put on for board of directors, new board of directors. I think it would be imperative to attend something like that, and then just come up to speed to where the department is financially, operationally, and set a roadmap and a path for the future. And also communicate that with the city and work with the city on that.
Okay, and number two is, what do you see as the top three concerns facing the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District?
The, the top concern, the district as a whole, I, I'm sure the district as a whole, their top concern right now is the fire station that is closed. Top concerns, though, need to be the safety of the citizens, maintaining, providing the best level of service that we can, and also financial stability.
Thank you.
And I'll say that like on financial, an example of one thing that, that over time semi does work itself out is the fact that people retire now with PEPRA, people pay different portions on their pension. That works out to the benefit because the employee pays it, those sorts of things.
Councilmember Campbell?
Good evening to you, and thanks for coming. My first question, the district's financial transparency has been lacking. What top three steps would you take to improve transparency of the district's financial operations, information, and status?
That is probably the toughest question I've been asked. The top steps would be to, to regularly meet with the chief, regularly inquire, and receive updates on the budget of the department. And since you asked, I mean, you, you just asked about finances, and that would be the, that would be the top process, and then communicating back with the city.
So I understand it to mean you would stay on top of the finances, right?
You would have to. Like I said earlier, the, the top priority is the safety of the citizens of Riverbank, but then second to that is definitely the finances and paving the path for the future as far as like Crossroads West. And I just keep saying that because that's the, that's where the large growth is right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My next question, identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about, and describe how you as a board member would balance the concerns or needs of the city council, community, district staff, and other board members to determine how to vote on the issue.
I, I think the, the current one that I would bring up would be the burning out of the fire station. Even though that fire station is not in the city of Riverbank, it is Stanislaus Consolidated. It's, it's a department that I like to think that we work with as a partnership, and I think we need to keep on the radar that a top priority is, these are constituents, they are paying an assessment, and their level of service, we need to, we need to protect everybody as a whole. The board needs to work together to, to ensure that everybody's getting the, the best level of service and the most prudent financial status available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just have one question for you. What is your experience working in a group setting, and how will you make sure that all members are engaged in collaborating and respecting each other's input, views, and recommendations?
The, the best example I would give of that is the Communications Advisory Committee that I chair right now with the county. You've probably all seen in the news that Assemblymember Flora was able to actually to secure Stanislaus County $12 million for new communications equipment for the fire agencies. Heading up the committee, that is, working with departments, going through, there are national standards as far as how many radios are allowed for this type of equipment, that type of equipment, so on and so forth, and we will always have, there are always people that will follow the rules, and we will always have people that want to fudge numbers and submit larger numbers. So we, we have to work together as a whole, and sometimes we have to, we have to make some harsh decisions, but we have the backing to back it up, and we have the explanation as to why we have to do what we have to do. And unfortunately, you know, the, the absolute last thing we want to do is cut the level of service to the public.
Okay, thank you. This interview is now completed, and we thank you for interviewing, and you may now return to the lobby. Thank you. At this time, I will open it up for a public comment. Any member of the public who would like to comment on the business item will have three minutes to do so. Is there any public comment?
My name is Charles Neal. I live at 2312 Rio Verde Drive, Riverbank, California. I also have your twenty-page Attorney General's opinion, and his opinions like mine, it's just an opinion. And I'd like to think that, you know, I don't want to come up here and, and make any dispersions against the mayor because I back the mayor in all things, but I think that, you know, it's just like scripture tells me, there's no way that you can serve two masters. And I think you have to make a decision, are you going to best serve the city of Riverbank or the fire department? And when the legal matters come up, the mayor just said that he was going to go with the council or the Riverbank legal system. Therefore, there could be a lot of problems, you know, when you have a board member that's going with the city, when the city and the fire department at times have been at odds with what, as far as the finances is concerned, and some of the things that they do in development and all. Chief Mayard is no longer with the fire department, he's deceased. So I mean, you know, he had some opinions back then in 2012, but those were just opinions also. We have a new fire chief, a local Riverbank resident, born and raised here, a veteran of the US military, Marine Corps. We have new financial people at the fire department. And yes, there have been some problems, but some of those problems with the finances can be put right back with the city of Riverbank as far as paying the assessments on the different projects that they have. At one time, the city of Riverbank wasn't paying their fair share on the fire assessments for the senior citizens complexes, and the, and the federal government was paying them to do it. And if you'll also go back in this Riverbank ammunition plant out here, we have to provide fire services for them, but you read the contract, and it said fire suppression in the very first lease that they had, fire suppression, $90,000. Does that mean what the city said was, the city's representative at that district out there was, that they were for fire extinguishers? Well, I'm afraid $90,000 would buy a whole lot of fire extinguishers and not too many fire trucks. So that $90,000, they should have been paying the assessment on that property out there, and you come to the city, and the city says, oh, well, it belongs to the federal government, the federal government is exempt. You go to the federal government, and they say, well, we paid them $90,000 a year for fire suppression, and the city says, well, no, that was for some other things. So I mean, you know, there's going to be a conflict when it comes to the city of Riverbank and the fire department. There always has been, and there always will be. And those things have to be worked out, and I don't think by having the mayor on there, taking his advice from the city's legal counsel, and the other fire board members taking their advice from the fire district's legal counsel, that it can quite work when it comes to a vote. I think the city and the fire departments, they're either in court or in negotiations concerning the west side development that's going on right now. And, and when, sometimes when it comes to decisions that's made, you need all board members or all city council making that decision. Like I said, I, I live in the city of Riverbank, I support the mayor, but I also support the fire department, and I think that, you know, that by having the, the mayor on the fire board would be a disadvantage to the citizens of Riverbank. And that's my opinion, just like your twenty-page Attorney General's opinion. Thank you very much.
We thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name's Mike Horton, Fire Chief. I wasn't going to speak, but we took a pretty bad bashing there by the mayor. So a few things to clear up, like Mr. Neal said, Chief Mayard left the agency in 2013, he has passed away. Some of the decisions he made is where we're at today. Closing the station, just like the city of Riverbank, I've lived here all my life. The city's been up and down financially, but that's where we're at today. I've made a lot of changes since I took over the fire chief this year. I believe we're headed in the right direction to get our finances in order. Blaming the union and stuff, I don't believe that's right either. We had some chiefs that came in in the meantime that said there was more money there and gave some raises out that probably shouldn't have been given out, but, you know, at the time, that's what the chief was deciding on doing. Me closing the station, I made that decision. That station runs .04 calls a month, cost me about $1.3 million to keep it open, $950,000 in the red, I had to make a decision. That's my decision to make, close that station. The mayor has not approached me one time about some of the stuff, the comments he made today, but he continues to go to the city of Modesto and talks with their fire chiefs about providing service to the city of Riverbank. I wish he'd come and talk to me about some of these issues, but he has not one time. I talked to Sean, kind of tell Sean where I'm at on some of the stuff. I actually get advice from Sean on certain things, but I think the mayor did not do his homework like he said he did. I wasn't going to speak today because I wasn't going to say, you know, take a side with anybody, but taking a bashing from the mayor like this is just wrong. There's other things that, that we've done. I'm, I'm losing a deputy chief that's going to help us save money. I've replaced finance people. I got a new finance manager in place, our budget's turning around, and I think we're heading in the right direction. And the Oakdale sayings, yeah, we lost a contract with Oakdale. City of Modesto Fire Chief, I deal with him a lot too, and he said the same, he's told me several times that the city manager of, of Modesto, the city manager of Oakdale, were meeting for two years prior to this happening. The last year, they brought him in, told him to make this happen. And this is the same thing this mayor is doing. He is working with the city of Modesto to try to change the fire service here that you've had for years. I've been in this department for 30 years, and I think it's a good department. We have some kinks we got to work out, but I think we're going to, we're heading in the right direction. So I just want you guys to know that. I, I don't think he did all of his homework. So, thank you.
We thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, no other public comment. Seeing none, so I will close the public comment, and I bring it back to the council to consider an appointment. Are there any comments, discussion, and or motion to nominate one of the applicants?
I do have some concerns with the mayor and the conflict with the legalities, and with time, being able to serve on both boards, so I am going to suggest, what's his name? Chad? Chad Homie? He has the experience, maybe not as much as the mayor, but he can also get some guidance from the mayor.
So is that a nomination, or is that a comment?
I nominate Chad Homie.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please. We've heard the nomination, you also heard a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Fosse?
Yes.
Uribe?
No.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes three, one.
Thank you, gentlemen. On behalf of this council, we want to thank you both for interviewing and for your interest in wanting to represent the city of Riverbank. The council has voted to appoint Chad Homie to serve as Riverbank's representative on the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District Board of Directors. Congratulations, and thank you again for your interest. And you both may now take your seat.
Thank you.
At this point, this concludes the interview and the selection portion of this item. We will now consider adoption of a resolution to approve the appointment of Chad Homie to the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District Board of Directors as a city of Riverbank representative. Is there a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion for that, to that extent.
I'll second.
So you've heard the motion and a second. Is there a roll call, please?
Just for the record, mayor is recused from this item.
Oh, darn it.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Fosse?
Yes.
Uribe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero.
The proceedings of this item have now concluded, and I hand the gavel back to Mayor O'Brien.
Item six, to consider a resolution to approve a memorial at Sorson Park for Ismael Martinez-Wentz as requested by Alcira Vega.
Thank you very much, mayor, and good evening. In the late afternoon of August 26, 2019, Ismael Martinez-Suertas, a joltin' solid waste employee, was tragically killed in an apparent equipment-related accident at 5300 Block of Homewood Way, as we all know. In the wake of the passing, Mr. Martinez-Suertas, there was an outpouring of support from the community and condolences. There were, I was, I'm colorblind, so I thought they were purple hearts, but I was told later they were blue hearts put on the trash cans throughout the community. We posted them here at City Hall. We also, there was also a candlelight vigil held, and very widely attended by the, the community and partner agencies, council members, city staff, et cetera. Since that time, I, I got a phone call from his widow, Mrs. Alcira Vega, and she has to come meet with me, and she has, she had an idea that it would be, she would like the council to consider a memorial of some sort for him. And we discussed a little about, about what might be appropriate, given the circumstances. As council knows, since we had this issue come up just a couple months ago on another matter, we don't have a policy really for this type of thing, and in a city of 25,000 people, you know, pass away. And so generally, we stay away from memorial types of things unless there is specific, you know, public interest to it. I think that the, the difference in this case, what, that makes it unique, is that this person, although they were a contracted contractor, they were serving the city of Riverbank. Riverbank at the time, or he was serving the City of Riverbank at the time of his passing. So, we discussed what would be appropriate. Right across the street from where this occurred is Sorenson Park. And Mr. Martinez Huertas previously reworked at Sunrise Building Materials, who have offered to donate a sort of decorative boulder, you know, small in stature, that we could put sort of at the corner of that park area there and affix a plaque to it, sort of in his memory. And the, both of those items would be donated, so there'd be no cost to the city. We may have, incur some small amount of staff time trying to coordinate it, but minimal. And as I said, we don't really have a formal process, so this is a council decision. And as I mentioned a moment ago, I don't really see any significant financial impact, but this may be an appropriate way to pay some memory to a person that lost their life, unfortunately. And so, I'd be happy to answer any questions. His, I think Mrs. Vega was going to attend tonight, but I don't see her in the audience,
I think with the community involvement with his death and the fact that, as you said, he was working for the City of Riverbank and the articles that will be put at the park are being donated, I think it's a great idea. And so, I'm all for it. I think it's nice.
I agree with you, Cindy.
Yeah, I think I agree too, so almost unanimous, probably.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that as well.
We have done this in the past for Officer Paris. Done it for Scott Pettit, who was just a community member, but a very great supporter. I believe we should have some type of guidelines, but I'm all for this. It's not because it's being donated, but this was, I think, heartfelt for the city. And it's observing someone who did work for the city in other capacities. I'm for it. This is just guidance, right?
Actually, I do have, excuse me, actually, I do have a resolution. And the reason I wrote a resolution for this is that in twenty-five years, when someone has a question about what happened, I wanted there to be a record for us so that someone could go back and see what exactly, the plaque is not going to go into any kind of detail about what happened to this person, and so I just wanted it to be in the record in case anybody ever wondered.
My computer's down. I don't have it in front of me. Never mind.
I make a motion that we-
One minute, one minute. This is a public meeting. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for consideration.
I have a motion that we approve item six point two.
I'll second it.
A motion to approve and a second on item six point two.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
Yes.
Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Resolution, item six, three, a resolution requesting that the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department appoint Lieutenant Ed Ridenhour to the position of Chief of Police for Riverbank Police Services.
Thank you very much, mayor. This is a very exciting item for us. As, as you know, the City of Riverbank contracts for law enforcement services with the Stanislaus Sheriff's Department. We have a long, generally very positive relationship with the Sheriff's Department. Unfortunately, my partner over there in the police department has informed us that in March of twenty-twenty, he's going to officially hang it up and, and retire. And we're, we're sad, but we're very happy for him. And so, in order to plan appropriately for Chief Kylie's pending retirement, the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Office initiated internal recruitment for his replacement in October of this year. Sheriff Dirxy and his command staff indicated that the Riverbank Council could participate in a longstanding process whereby the Sheriff's Office forwards qualified candidates who are interested in serving in the position of Chief of Police here in town. On November twelfth, the council held, held interviews for qualified applicants for the chief position. As a result of those interviews, council provided direction as to who the top candidate would be for the chief of police. It should be stated that the applicants that participated were all highly qualified and excellent applicants. It was a very close decision. The, the direction from the council was that the top candidate was Lieutenant Ed Ridenhour, who's also here this evening. Lieutenant Ridenhour is a twenty-year veteran with the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Office. Toward the beginning of his career, he was actually previously stationed here as a patrol deputy at the City of Riverbank. Since that time, he's served all over the Sheriff's Department as a community deputy in Salida, a deputy within the Special Vehicles Operation Unit, chief deputy coroner, patrol watch commander, and most recently and currently, he is the Court Services Commander for the Sheriff's Department. As the chief of police, Lieutenant Ridenhour will be responsible for the day-to-day management of our police department. This includes all law enforcement-related operational and service delivery tasks required to provide those services. In addition, Lieutenant Ridenhour will be responsible for all common additional duties as we normally require of the chief of police, has been the case with Chief Kylie over many, many years, and his predecessors. We've already had some initial discussions with the Sheriff's executive team regarding a transition timeline in order to hopefully provide some overlap between Chief Kylie and incoming Chief Ridenhour. As Chief Kylie's retirement timeline nears, we will give some updates on that transition plan, and after this evening, we'll also work with, with Chief Kylie and Chief Ridenhour on an appropriate meet-and-greet forum outside of this meeting for the chief to meet the community, you know, less formal setting. And then I think we have, so we have a number of folks from, oh, here he is, the sheriff is actually here this evening as well. And the resolution before you is, is simply to request that the gentleman standing to Chief Kylie's right, who's Sheriff Dirxy, consider appointing, hopefully Chief Ridenhour as the chief of police here in, in Riverbank, and be happy to answer any questions. I know that there's probably some statements that folks are going to want to make as well.
Are there any questions? I will go right to the statements. I'd like to know, Lieutenant Ridenhour, if you'd come on up here and still state why you want to be here? And can you put up with me?
I'll do, I'll do my best, mayor. No, I look forward to working in this community as a young deputy. I was here once before, and I spent many years here. I enjoyed the community very much, so if you adopt this resolution, I look forward to being the chief of this community. And once again, serving this great community and working with them and creating a team partnership with this community as we move forward in public safety. So, I hope you approve the resolution.
Well, thank you. Any questions of Lieutenant Ridenhour? None? Okay. Sheriff, you want to say anything? And by the way, thank you for the qualified candidates you, you gave us.
Well, mayor, you are, you are most welcome. And ladies and gentlemen of the council, thanks. Thanks for having us up here. Yeah, I agree. You guys have made an outstanding choice, and as, as I told you, and Sean, when we met, that whatever your choice was, I would honor that because you had two, two fine candidates, and either one of them would have done a great job, but you have selected an outstanding young man to fill Aaron's shoes. Is he, well, he's not going to ride off into the sunset because his home is to the east, so he can't actually ride that way, or it would be a very long ride. He's just done a fabulous job both for our department and for your city, and we're very proud of him and, and thank him for his service. And I think Ed will, will do just as well for you, so we are excited about that. And we will do kind of the final transition discussions separately, but any questions from the council, I'm happy to entertain them.
Any questions?
No.
No, thank you, chief. Do I dare ask?
It's a little early for a farewell for me, but.
You're, you're fine being, standing right there.
Well, I can come up and speak.
Please. I don't get to embarrass you that often.
No, you don't, but you do a good job when you get the opportunity. So, I'll just echo what's already been said. I've known Lieutenant Ridenhour, future Chief Ridenhour, for approximately twenty years. Had the chance to work alongside of him in a number of different assignments, a number of different situations. He has established himself all along that timeline as a consummate law enforcement professional, and I know that whatever service he provides for the city, it will be equal to or exceed my own. So, you've chosen well, and I don't plan on leaving until March thirteenth, so I don't anticipate any extended vacation time. I know sometime, sometimes when individuals get close to their retirement date, they'll take an extended vacation. I don't plan on doing that. So, we'll have plenty of opportunity to go ahead and put our transition plan in place. We've already met several times. We'll continue to meet, and it should be a seamless, seamless transition. So, look forward to it.
Thank you, chief. And we appreciate what you have done for us.
No, you're more than welcome. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. This is a public meeting. Anyone from the public wishes to speak on this topic?
The mayor said he would fill this role.
My name is Charles Neal, twenty-three, twelve, Rio Verde Drive, Riverbank, California. And all I'd like to say is that with Chief Kylie, we've had a great, open communications with him in all respect. The Christian community thinks he's done an outstanding job, and, and we just wish him well in his retirement, and I just pray that everything will go according to the way that he would like for it to. And we look forward to the new chief coming in. We'd like to get more acquainted with him, and it's funny, he said he'd been in this city before, and he didn't look too familiar to me, and I thought I knew them all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, I bring it back to this council for consideration.
I'll make a motion, we approve item six point three.
I second it.
A motion to approve item six point three and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
Yes.
Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Item six point four, water consumption billing update.
Thank you very much, mayor. Our assistant city manager is going to give you an update on our live, going live with consumption billing at long last.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Three years ago, I stood before you, well, actually, I sat beside you as I was interim city manager at that time, and we had a discussion regarding consumption billing. We had started a water meter project approximately mid-two thousand fourteen that had gone fairly well with the installation at that point in time. We made the decision to upload all of the information into our water meter system and be able to bring that into our billing system and go live with consumption billing and our new water meters. Unfortunately, we ran into a few little difficulties, and so based on that conversation that I held with the city council that day, we decided that for the duration of the project, we would not go ahead and bill any of the consumption. So, for the past three years, all of our residents have enjoyed the base billing with all of the five-year adopted rates that we have had. So, now, we have reached the point where we have installed the water meters, we have tested the water meters, we have done a lot of work with the finance department staff in order to ensure that the data that is being collected, we have confidence in that so that when residents call, we know exactly where to look, what to look, and what be able to ask them. The staff has been training for quite some time, not just in the office, but also the staff that's out in the field with the water department. They have gone out with the contractor to make sure that when an issue arises, they will be able to look for the way to make sure that it gets solved and quickly as possible. We now have the tools in our hand to be able to push the button and go live with consumption billing. Since the inception of not going ahead and doing consumption billing, there's always been notification to the residents on the bill itself that we will be going live with consumption billing. A couple of city council meetings ago, we gave the city council an update regarding our intent to go live as of January first. So, the January first billing is where we would start to bill for consumption billing. That would include the usage for November and December. We made that notification to our residents. We did receive some feedback from them, a few expressing concerns regarding whether we were confident in the system, whether they had some confidence in the system themselves having gone through some of the difficulties that we did three years ago. We've also heard some feedback from the city council regarding the information that was provided to our residents and their future ability to be able to see their consumption from the, you know, the comfort of their home on a tablet, on a cell phone, or on a computer system. So, what we would like to bring forward to the city council today for consideration is an opportunity for you to discuss and provide direction to staff on whether you feel it is appropriate to move forward with consumption billing with this January billing as we had originally planned and that we are ready to do so, or if you would like to delay the implementation of consumption billing to the March billing, which will bill for January and February, which will allow us some time to roll out that key feature that I just mentioned. The resident being able to log on and have the ability to view their consumption from the moment that they know that they're going to get billed for it and be able to monitor their usage. I do have to say that that's going to be very important to be able to give that confidence to the resident that the data that, or the billings that they are receiving are accurate because they will be able to see that information for themselves rather than having to call City Hall. We are certainly available to walk them through the system. Once it's live, we have every intention to send out newsletters on how to log in, how to register, how to navigate through the system, as well as being able to hold some public forums so that they can come in and get some hands-on training with that as well. I'm available for any questions you might have. I do want to say that since we have not been billing for consumption, we have noticed that residents are probably not as aware of how much water usage is actually occurring. So, over the past two billings, they have received that consumption figure, but sometimes it takes a while to register what that consumption really means. And so, that's where being able to roll out this key feature comes into consideration. With some of the data that we receive from our public works department, we have noticed that the level of water usage for our residents per day is at the same level it was pre-drought. And if we were to go into a drought again and there was an emergency drought resolution issued by the State of California, I think our residents would probably have some difficulty scaling back just because they don't have sort of that framework with regards to what their usage really is.
And thank you, Marisol. The only thing I wanted to add on to what you said, which I think is a super important point, is from a conservation perspective, consumption billing is really the most important thing that we can do because there is no way to affect behavior like a pocketbook. And we are seeing that more than three-quarters of our accounts are using above-base amounts in the hot, you know, months we were looking at. So, it'll be interesting, that one of the reasons that this timeframe generally makes sense during wet months is that you're not going to hopefully have people watering quite as much so they can hopefully get their behavior in line prior to the summer starting. So, I just wanted to add that because the conservation component's important.
Do we have a rollout date for that aquahawk feature yet?
So, we are looking to roll out right after the first of the year.
I think that's a good starting point when you allow us to complete system, which is included with the aquahawk, that the consumer now knows when he's, or she, is using excessive amount of water. I was surprised I used four hundred and twenty gallons. You told me on a certain day, and I go, oh, yeah, I did water. So, I could monitor my use at that time. Right now, I, I can't. So, if we have it at the first of the year, new year, new system, new information, I think that's our starting point, and it should be the end of February. It is the twenty-ninth, not the thirtieth, as someone told me earlier. So, I, I believe that should be- So I believe that should be it, but we should have Aqua Hawk up and running as soon as possible.
Yes, so currently, we do have a test group that has been, we have reached out to them. Finance Department will be working with them to make sure that they know how to register for that, be able to log in and be able to navigate through the system. That will allow us to get some initial feedback from that test group so that when we finally go live with the system, we can issue some frequently asked questions. We can hold those public forums to show how the system works and be able to anticipate some of those questions that we may receive.
And I believe we also mentioned a YouTube video.
We will work on that. We have some very competent finance department staff that like to, you know, take advantage of their skills, and so we can definitely work on something.
Maricela, I just have one comment. I talked with the city manager about this a little bit. According to what Sean told me, our base was set back in nineteen sixty-two. And I think we should look at that base to make sure that it fits the times for a fair base since there's been a lot of changes in the world and whatnot, and even in our community. And maybe we can do some comparisons with other cities or our size or whatnot for where their bases are that might be more updated.
Yeah, so it was set in nineteen sixty-two, but reratified in two thousand fifteen with the water rate study.
Okay, good. And we will have communication going out to our residents, letting them know that we're going to go live.
Correct. Yes.
Other than just the water billing.
Other than just the water bill. Yes, that's correct.
Whatever your decision is, this evening, Thursday, we have a newsletter deadline that goes to everybody, so.
One other comment. In your newsletter, send out, for those of us that pay automatically, because I got caught in this, I just thought it adjusted itself automatically. It didn't. And so all of a sudden, I got one of those little red cards, you are twenty-six dollars in the hole. So I went down and paid it, but I think that we need to let the community know that it just, if they're paying online, it doesn't automatically adjust for a change.
Did you garnish his wage?
I have one more question. Plans for monthly billing?
So I think at this point in time, we'd like to roll this out, see how consumption billing goes. That will help modify behaviors, as the city manager mentioned. And hopefully, we'll also roll out our monthly payment schedule and along with this program so that people can set up their own monthly payments rather than try to go to monthly billing only because we have the added costs of the monthly billings if we decide to move forward with that without having had the revenue come in at that point in time. So that's something we can evaluate after we have, you know, finalized consumption billing and gotten our residents used to that process.
Okay. I just think it's important that people understand that they can do that and make that monthly payment if they wanted to.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
I have a comment. We've waited a long time for this, even before I got on council. They're ready. They want to see it in January. They've been told they're going to see it in January. And I think if we wait till March, they're going to get that January bill, and they're going to go, oh, great, look at how much I'm paying for consumption because that's what I've been told. I don't think we should wait. I think it's time to roll it out. We've been telling them. We've been saying how exciting it's going to be. We've been saying it's going to happen. I think holding it till March is not a good thing to do. I think people will be confused, and it just delays the problems. It just needs to move forward. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. This is a public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic?
Good evening. Only two concerns. One concern is low-income senior citizens and using the amount of water, and if there would be anything in place for them, if they need assistance with their billing, or how would it go if they fell behind in their billing? And then the second would be bilingual notifications.
Any other comment? We can address, oh, you. I'm the same, Charles Neal at twenty-three twelve Rio Verde Drive in Riverbank. And roll it out as fast as you can. I'd like to know how much I'm using. We can get you Aqua Hawk. Maricela, would you address the previous concerns?
Yes, so I'm glad I get this opportunity to pull out a plug for our utility rate assistance program. This is the program that the city council has established in order to assist our low-income senior residents and those that are considered permanently disabled. We have applications available in all of the city offices as well as online. It provides for a rate reduction on both water and sewer services. So anybody who feel like they may qualify, please feel free to come in and pick up an application. We can walk you through how to complete that, or you can give us a call here at City Hall. With regards to the notifications that are bilingual, the state of California has enacted new legislation that would require that the city of Riverbank and all water companies provide notifications to residents in multiple languages. And so the city of Riverbank Finance Department will be bringing forward our policy on that with the assistance of the city attorneys. We have placed that together to make sure that we are complying a hundred percent with the new legislation that's been enacted.
Okay, thank you.
And I like the fact that our newsletter now is in Spanish, so I like that. Thank you.
Okay. No other public comment? Bring it back for, say, we're giving, providing directions. So I do want to have a roll call on this, either pull the, push the button on thirty-one December or twenty-nine February. Any recommendations?
I'll recommend twenty-nine February.
I second.
If we have a recommendation to roll it out on starting one January, pushing the button on the twenty-ninth of February or thereabout, and a second.
Council members Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
No.
Uribe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes four one.
Item six point five, cannabis development proposals, onsite consumption, discussion, and direction.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The, over the past number of months, really in earnest, probably the last six to, six to eight months, Donna and I, who are sort of, we're sort of the, the beginning committee for anybody interested in cannabis-type uses in Riverbank. So they usually will talk to Donna, we'll get some information from them, and we've, she and I vet them. It's sort of the process. We've had a number of different requests, both from internal Riverbank cannabis businesses as well as external businesses that don't exist here yet, to have a discussion or consider onsite consumption of cannabis at commercial facilities. The ordinance does not allow that and did not conceive that. It was actually something that was generally a point of concern from the community in the beginning when this was very new and raw for everyone. But at least from staff perspective, I would say that our cannabis program has been a success, really, from A to Z. We've had nearly no issues as a result of the approval of those businesses and have been really lucky to build some good partnerships with our three cannabis businesses that we have in town. So as we're getting these requests, one of the things, you know, typically, our response has been, listen, there really is an allowance for that in the code. And so, but the requests continued to come to a point where, in consultation with the city attorney and Donna, we decided to agendize this to have council just give some direction. If there's some interest in onsite cannabis use on behalf of the council, it's a process for us to amend the code and consider those requests. That process is expensive and requires quite a bit of staff time analysis. And we don't want to head off in that direction if there's not an immediate interest by council to direct that. So Donna, do you want to talk a little bit about some of the proposals that we have received? And we'll qualify that by saying, council, you're not making decisions on proposals this evening. You're making decisions and direction on concept tonight, but just as a flavor of kind of what we're, what we've been asked.
Well, the city manager is correct. There has been a parade of applicants coming through City Hall. Some are pretty easy to vet out, others, you know, take some consideration. Thank goodness we have our code to follow, and some of them have been mixed drinks. You know, like the THC, the cannabis is in a, in a sports drink. There are some edible proposals. There were some, just, just a wide variety, almost anything you can think of. We even have one gentleman who, though not specifically involved in the cannabis, wants to run an employment agency for bud tenders, to supply the bud tenders to the grows. So this has been very interesting, and then two of them now that have recently come to us to ask us about consumption. One is the Riverbank Cannabis Collective, which you, most people know is next to City Hall South. Their business model is sitting down with their clients and spending a lot of time with them as opposed to Flavors, which is more of our Walmart-type retail. Part of the education that Riverbank Cannabis Collective gives to their clients is, you know, what might work for you, what's an alternative? And then questions usually come to how is it used? So their thought is to have consumption onsite to help these cannabis patients learn how to appropriately use those products. A second business that has come in recently to speak with us about some future plans involves an event center. Now, normally, an event center, you know, during the week, there are first aid classes, there are stormwater classes. There are a variety of different uses that you can rent out the facility for. So their idea is on the weekends to have cannabis events, maybe start out slowly once a month, see how that takes off, and there could be a wide variety of these different cannabis events. In my mind, it's, you could have the American Cancer Society and the cannabis growers talking about their strains and what they might do for particular illnesses. You could have the growers up in the hills who want to vend to the dispensaries come and meet with the dispensary owners to talk about their products and costs and deliveries. So as a dispensary owner, you wouldn't want to just make a large investment in a certain type of cannabis having not tested it or tried it to see if it's actually, you know, worth the money and bringing it to your facility. So their thought is also to have, you know, the security like the, like the dispensaries have. There would be security coming into this event center. People who left that event center, having consumed cannabis, would be able to have Ubers or other rides to take them to their home destinations. The plan is not to have any cannabis onsite during the week. It only comes in with the vendors and leaves with the vendors if, if that's the type of event it is. So as you can see, there's been some pretty interesting types of businesses wanting to start up, and staff just needs a little bit of guidance as to, are you interested in allowing certain types of cannabis activities in the city? Do you want us to come forward and do some research and present you with some options? Or is this something that you just think is a waste of our time and we should be looking in another direction?
Thanks, Donna. And the only other thing I'd add to that is, you know, we tried to do a little of analysis leading up to this, so you're not just sort of out there making a decision with no information. One of the issues is that it's still fairly new. You know, the larger communities like at Los Angeles and San Francisco have these, have consumption lounges and other kind of consumption places. And then Colorado, obviously, for some time now has. But, you know, at least from a municipal perspective, we have really a limited sample size to advise you on concerns that we would see from just a general land use perspective of public safety issues or, or, you know, any other kind of neighborly planning problems we could imagine. So that's really the most information we could provide at this time because it's really what we have. I know that there are a couple of folks from the industry here this evening that'll probably have a public comment as well.
I got one. So the concern I have with the THC is that we don't have a way to test it, so I wouldn't be comfortable going that route because there's no real scientific way of testing when someone has had too much. But I would be okay with the CBD consumption. CBD doesn't have a euphoric high. I do see the need for someone needing medication throughout the day to control pain, inflammation, anxiety, and other chronic conditions. So if we do go down this route, I would like to see clean medicine in a safe, comfortable location.
I'm just not for it. I don't think the citizens in Riverbank are for it. They'd have concerns with people leaving the sites and high and driving their car or walking home and being easily agitated, you know, different effects that it has on people. I'm just not for it. I don't see that we're at that point now where we need to do it like we do alcohol.
I am, word is not, it's not confused, but the word is, I'm like torn between because I know that it has helped a lot of people. And I'm all for people doing alternative medicine like this because I know that's what the Cannabis Collective is all about. And, you know, treating the person as a whole rather than just that one particular symptom like they do, not symptom, but diagnosis like they do for medicine. But as Councilmember Uribe stated, I don't agree with, you know, the euphoric kind of consumption. But if it's, if it's the oil that's going to help and it's, you know, can be done right there, I think that more, more information, more knowledge people have about cannabis and its use, I think is, is a good thing. And with the plans that the Cannabis Collective has for education, for showing people exactly what it can do, how it can help you, I think is also a good thing. So I think that if we, I just think that we need more information before we say yes. I'd like to just see some more research done, just to see what other cities have done. Even small cities, I mean, it affects everybody, and I just would like to see what else other cities have done other than LA and San Francisco.
I would totally just disagree with having any of the kind of parties or the festivals on the weekend or whatever you were talking about to that extent. I don't think our community is ready for that. But I agree with Councilmember Uribe and Council, our Vice Mayor, about the nature of the medical marijuana, the same way that they do. And I think there is some benefit in the medical marijuana because if it's a new, if you've got a new customer there and they really don't know how much to take or how to use it, or what the experience might be, it might be an advantageous thing medically to say, guide them through it for the first time or so. Other than that, that's where I'm at.
We consciously said no to consumption when we heard the public. And the public's concern was people getting high either at the place or around it or in a park. And that hasn't really happened, and nor will we allow that to happen, at least not right now, not knowing how we would be controlling the situation. The information exchange, or the partying that he's stated, the information exchange can take place in other areas instead of the Riverbank area for right now. We have plans in the works that will help some of that. We have plans in the works that will help some of that knowledge exchange happen in the future, and that can be worked in, but not, not right now for the THC. For the non-THC, I think we need to take a look at that and how those can be applied and go forward, you know, considering that. Again, we'd have to be able to control what products are being given. I understand THC is used in stress-related and some others for relaxation, but as we said, as we did these ordinances and Riverbank Collective was here, they knew that we were not going to allow onsite consumption, and that we were expecting that to be for the THC. So, the only way I would entertain anything if you can come back with a non-THC plan and as we develop one future site and how that information exchange can be built into the future development. But I, I don't even want to entertain THC consumption at this time.
Thank you.
With that, I'm sure there's gonna be some disagreement to that, is there a public comment?
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Staff. My name is Kimberly Cargile. I'm one of the founders and board directors of Riverbank Cannabis Collective. Over the last year, we just had our one-year anniversary, we have proven that we have not made a negative impact on the community and have been an upstanding business. And the reason why we're asking for onsite consumption is a number of reasons. First is, being in our downtown location, we are, are struggling a little bit, making ends meet, we're having a hard time getting people to come in. What we specialize in is medical cannabis and teaching people how to use cannabis correctly, how to use the minimum effective dose to increase well-being, not intoxication. Actually, the number one question we have is how do I use cannabis and not get high? It's the opposite of what you would think. So, we have a number of services that we provide, yoga, meditation, paint classes. We love to incorporate the use of responsible cannabis use into these services. You know, you can get a massage, use massage therapy with cannabis without any intoxication because by using THC on the skin, it doesn't cross the blood-brain barrier and attach to the CB1 receptors, which causes the psychoactivity. So we could do massage without any intoxication. We could also use a variety of vaporizations in high CBD, CBG, CBN, there are 100 cannabinoids, THC is the only one that causes intoxication. So we could use a variety of medicines without that worry. We can also incorporate it into a class or a service which requires people to stay at the site for an hour. So when you vaporize even THC, the effects only last for an hour compared to an edible form that can last much longer. So we can regulate this and maybe do a pilot program based on specific cannabinoid profiles, specific administrative techniques, and based on their specific effects. And so I think that it can be done responsibly, as we have shown that you can have a cannabis dispensary downtown in Riverbank responsibly, and maybe work with you on coming to a middle ground on this one. And thank you so much for everything you do, and thank you for having us have this conversation tonight.
No other comment? Mr. Neal? You haven't moved?
Pardon?
You haven't moved?
Haven't moved yet.
Still at 2312?
I'm still right there. Boy, I don't know, but I'm, you know, I'm considering some things. When you had all the public hearings concerned in this cannabis coming into Riverbank, you know, you, you informed the citizens that time there would be no onsite consumption. And the citizens of Riverbank, those that opposed it completely, still went ahead and accepted it, I mean, they didn't sue anybody or come against the council for it. But now in the middle of the stream, without a lot of public hearings and without any knowledge to the citizens of Riverbank, you're talking about having onsite consumption, and you don't really have any, any way to regulate that or any laws that, you know, that, that gives you the authority to regulate it. And you talk about the fact of it is, you know, when I go to the doctor and he gives me a prescription, he doesn't sit down and say, okay, take this medication and let me evaluate you or see what it's gonna do, should I increase it or decrease it? He gives me the prescription and I give him feedback on it. I don't want a lot of people smoking marijuana up at that cannabis site that's pretty close to my home, I don't want my kids and grandkids or my neighbors around it. They don't approve of it, and I don't want it up there, as far as I'm concerned. And that's my opinion, I think that, you know, you should stick to the regulation that you have because if somebody really wanted some good cannabis, they could get on the internet and Willie Nelson would send it to them. Thank you.
Just for your information, we are not making a decision at all tonight.
I realize that, it's an informational thing, but, but, you know, more of the citizens of Riverbank could be informed before you start talking about an informational item.
Have the same thing that we had before.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Deanna Garcia, Riverbank Cannabis Collective. I just brought some things tonight that I'd like to put on the table and just kind of explain what they are and how to use them.
So this here is a muscle freeze, it's a roll-on, very good for people with inflammation, and here's some...
Please pass it to the clerk, she'll take care of us.
So these are just different product types, different ways to be able to use cannabis, and different ways that it can help you. Also, your pets have an cannabinoid system with a lot of, with a lot of pain and symptoms, these days, and a lot of people have...
Have pets, and they come in and there's Vet CBD Pet products for them, but they're not sure how to use them. So we always let them know that there is a website on here and a 1-800 number where they can actually talk to a live veterinarian and get more information about like the size of their dog, the weight of their dog, the breed of their dog. So, again, more information on how to consume cannabis, not only for the human, but for their loved ones who are four-legged. We have CBD cookies. This is a bag of tea that you put into a hot water to be able to get your cannabis in a tea form, which is very relaxing and soothing for people who have trouble relaxing and calming down and sleeping at night. This is sparkling water. All of these that I bring before you are CBD products. Here is a CBD infused coffee. Again, you could have it cold or hot, but the main concern when people come in is, that's great that you have all these different products, but how do I know how much to take? What do I know will be my dose? So here on the side, they all have different dosing measures to let you know, the milligrams, and a lot of people have a hard time microdosing. They don't realize that this is not for one, one setting, this is not for one consumption, and that they could break it down and that they could use the website on here to make different drinks and different recipes to be able to intake their CBD on a daily. This here is a, a salve, that's a relieving pain salve that is also very good, but if people maybe live at home alone and they have areas where they can't reach them and nobody else is willing to reach them, it's very nice to have some healing medicine put on by a licensed professional who can help you. Again, another roll-on. So these products here are, are not going to intoxicate you in any way. Here's a transdermal gel pin, which goes on your main vein, either on your foot or your wrist. It's another good way of, of getting your daily dosed of cannabis. So I just want to show you that smoking is not the number one go-to for cannabis intake at, at our dispensary. Our dispensary, we have lots of different methods of how to be able to use cannabis, and we like to give the education of how to use it. So this here is a tincture drop, and again, it has the dosing here, but you don't know, right? You come in and you say, I need that CBD stuff everybody's talking about. What symptoms are you having? What symptoms are you trying to relieve with it? So we like to start everybody out with small microdosing and ask them to please keep track of how much they use, the effects that they have with it, and come back and let us know so that way we can recommend something else. More different tea bags. This here is a transdermal patch that lasts for 12 hours. This could be cut into fours or it could be left as a whole. So a lot of people don't understand that depending on their pain, depending on their inflammation, depending on what kind of symptoms they're having, we have different doses and different ways to be able to take it. This here is...
Could you wrap it up, please?
Yep, yep, no problem. So I just wanted to let you know that there is a lot of different ways besides what we hear in the media vaping and smoking to be able to consume cannabis, and we'd like to give classes with opening the package. So right now, we cannot open any packages in our store, we cannot show anybody how to microdose, and that is one of our number one concerns in dealing with the senior citizen population who's maybe never used cannabis. And also, as you know, we are surrounded by the senior citizen community here in Riverbank, and because they are in public housing, they are not allowed to consume their cannabis at their place without, without being found out and being evicted. So we have quite a few of our customers that come in on a daily that are not allowed to use the products that they purchase legally in their own residence, and this would be a safe haven for them. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? See, none, I bring it back for consideration or direction. Well, we said no onsite consumption, and I still think we should continue with the no onsite consumption. I believe that if we do go to another route, it's gonna be a public hearing, just like we've had in the past. We also have the ability in the near future to do some of the things that you're asking in another location that is secure, and that we can work all of that in if we choose to do onsite consumption. Sorry that it may hinder your ability to grow, grow the business, but that was the way it was, what was it, 18, 19 months ago when you were given it, and it's taken you a while to build out? Congratulations on being open for a year, I hope you're there for a long time, but I believe that the current code is sufficient and that I don't think we should change it, at least not at this time.
I don't know, I would like to see that we have additional research and analysis. I just feel like I don't want to say no and just close the door.
Research and analysis can go along at the same time, but I don't want to revisit it right away.
That's fine.
Okay.
I just want us to just not close the door and say, no, we just won't have it, period. I'd like to see what else is going on and see just some more information.
I'm in agreement with the Vice Mayor, I would like to see more research on strictly CBD consumption.
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Uribe and also the Vice Mayor, but also, I agree with the Mayor that we need to reach out to the public and get information from this like we did in the past.
Okay, so I have the direction, we'll, we'll do some more analysis and research. Before we come back to you, we'll solicit some public input, even though it won't be hearings or anything like that, and we'll plan on maybe seeing you back in a handful of months as workflow permits with research.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 71, staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items tonight. Michael's going to give an update on our completed smoke testing project, which just was done, this is a very expensive, lengthy project that has been needed in the city of Riverbank for a really long time. Before he does, I'd like to mention that Sue and I received some comments that Santa didn't get to visit Riverbank because we had to cancel unfortunately our Christmas parade, and so Sue pulled some strings, and Santa has agreed to visit town on the 21st from 12 to 2, bring your cameras, and it'll be rain or shine, he will be there for pictures with the community because we didn't want folks to miss out on that, and Michael's gonna give you an update on smoke testing briefly.
And I'll be quick. Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. So as you're aware, we, we had a very large project where we went through and basically blew smoke, not the kind of smoke, just smoke, that, through the whole sewer system to make sure that we didn't have any problems. I've been involved in working with the collection systems for close to 38 years, and I was expecting the worst and got pleasantly surprised with this. We basically did about 300,000 linear feet of 12-inch smaller, about 38,000 feet of 12-inch and larger, and we also had them survey 1,259 manholes. That's every inch of pipe we got in this town and every manhole that we have in this town. So through that process, we now have a very detailed map, that's GIS, that gives us the ability to go in and check any line segment we would like. Also, through that process, they identified the issues, and where I said presently, pleasantly surprised, out of all of that footage, we had, they identified 494 issues, ranging from light to severe. Of those 494, we only have 24 severe problems, which in a collection size this size, with the age of it, is very, very good. We had less than 10% problems within our sewer system, so we have the debt. Also, we were able to bring this project in in about $60,000 under budget, which enabled us to go ahead and put some more additional work onto National Plant about going through and IDing and, and prioritizing the severe problems. So we'll be that much ahead through discussion with the city manager that we decided that this would be the best use of those funds, since we had additional funds available to that. That's pretty much the end of it, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask, answer.
I appreciate it. Any, any real concerns from the residents?
At this point...
After, afterwards, not before.
We, we had a, we had a couple of problems that we had to deal with early on, but once it became, you know, as part of the process, because this was several months, we, we didn't have any, have any major problems. And through the report, you'll see of the 464 problems, 393 of them are missing cleanup caps on residents, which we'll, will identify and send a letter out to them to ask them to please replace their cap and we'll come out and inspect it.
Good, I didn't get a notice.
Yours wasn't on time.
It's coming.
Okay, that's it? Okay. All right, Councilmember Uribe.
So Stanislaus Homeless Alliance, the next meeting will be tomorrow, December 11th. It is open to the public, it's at 1010 10th Street, Basement Chambers, if anybody would like to attend. The 2020 Point and Time Count is Thursday, January 23rd, and we're still looking for one more volunteer, so if you would like any information, I do have the flyer here. And finally, I'll be attending the Riverbank Downtown Business Coalition meeting on December 18th alongside the city manager to continue to listen to their concerns, and happy holidays to everyone, thank you.
Ho, ho, ho. Councilmember Fossey.
I was sad to hear that we had to cancel the parade. I did talk with Sean after comments were posted on Facebook about Santa. So Sue, thank you very much for putting this together. I think the citizens will be happy with it and they'll be there. I know I've been posting it all over on Facebook, so thank you very much. Other than that, happy holidays, and we'll see you next year.
Councilmember Campbell.
I was glad to see the parade had to be canceled too because of the weather. Also, Councilmember Uribe isn't quite ready, had to take the fire engine out, our antique fire engine, we need a little bit more work with it, so we will continue with that. And I want to compliment Michael and his department on getting a project done in a timely fashion. Thank you, Michael.
Vice Mayor.
Okay, so Toys for Tots, our giveaway, will be at Cardoso Middle School on Saturday, December 14th, from 1 to 4. Pre-registration was required. Senior Brunch Fridays, we'll have a Christmas party December 20th, 10:30 to 12:30 at the Community Center. And I attended a webinar that was presented by California League of Cities regarding being... bills that were signed into law for 2019. There were several bills, and so I look forward to seeing exactly how it's going to affect our city, our state, in 2020. And Catholic Charities, they provide a lot of services here in River Bank to a lot of our residents, and they had an open house, and they have a new location on 1506 H Street in Modesto. And let's see, I think that might be it. And happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. See you in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad a lot of things can get done on time. Fiscal or financial review, when are we getting to see that? January? That's a long time from September. You know, I've been working on homeless housing since 2014. I'm glad we're still working the issue. I'd like to see if we can push your committee into saying they will reimburse us so we can start getting the acquisition of the housing for them. We're also looking with, partnering with the Cambridge Academy, and we should get some information from them, hopefully, in early January. So, what I would like to do is somewhere, someplace on probably the 23rd of January or the 9th of January, have the faith-based community meeting. The 23rd would be great. I appreciate that. And we should get some information from both areas at that time. In 2016, we were promised the smartphone. I'm glad we're starting the smartphone with monitoring the water. That is an integral part of this billing, and I'm glad that that's now taking place four years later. But still outstanding is the Riverbank ammo, Army ammunition base, still isn't transferred. And I'll be going to DC in January and talk with Secretary Kramer, I'm sure at the chagrin of some of the black people. But I'll, and if I don't get satisfaction from him, I have the name of his boss. I'd like to have the end-of-year review prior to us breaking from all the departments so I can do the state of the city. And sometime in March, maybe the 5th or the 19th, those Thursdays, when we don't have council meetings, I'm pointing the norm on that. If we could start getting together some type of plan for that, I would appreciate that. Again, before the break, and so I can work on it during the break. And to all, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, and I guess that's about Happy Anniversary to my wife. So, with that, we're going to go into closed session, consisting of item 8.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9 Alpha. Name of case, Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District versus the City of River Bank and DOES 1-20, Stanislaus County Superior Court case number Charlie Victor 19004402. Items 8.2, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo of government code 54956.9 Three, potential cases. Item 8.3, conference with rail property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8, property 062-00031-005 through 007. Agency negotiator Sean Scully, city manager. Property negotiator Ametis, Inc. Under negotiation price, term of payment, or both. Item 8.4, public employment pursuant to government code 54957 Bravo, title, city manager. At this time, anyone from the public may speak on these items for a period of up to five minutes. Do I have anyone from the public wishing to speak on these closed-session items? Seeing none, we're in closed session.
Just a second.
We're ready.
Regular city council and LRA board meetings are now in session. Report from 9.1. Report on closed session, item 8.1, conference with legal counsel existing litigation, Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District versus the City of Riverbank and DOES 1-20. Item 9.2, report from closed session on item 8.2, conference with legal council anticipated litigation, three potential cases. The council has authorized the city manager permission to sign the tolling agreement with Snyder Electric. Item 9.3, report from closed session on item 8.3, conference with real property negotiator, Admetis Inc., direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.4, report from closed session on item 8.4, public employment, city manager, direction has been provided to staff. With that, our next city council meeting will be held Tuesday, January 4th, 2020, 14th, 2020. Have a Merry Christmas.
Hey, John. I have here a couple of lists.